All right, good evening, everybody. A joint meeting of the Plan Development Subcommittee and Town Council meeting Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. First gen item, roll call. Counselor Lozo.
Right.
Counselor Dow.
Here.
DeeDee.
Here.
Catherine.
Here.
And Counselor Adams. All present, five zero. I have no gen item number two. I have no draft minutes. I'll have them at the next meeting. They'll be high.
I'll let you know.
Anyways, gen item number three. Review, discuss the town manager's recommendation to appoint Fane Wandelier. Have I said that correctly? Okay, all right.
Correct, thank you.
To the lic- licensing board effective immediately pending successful completion of state ethics and obtain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation.
Oh, dang it.
All right. I do want to add in here, I didn't pay attention to this, but Wade was one of those being appointed as an alternate. We got to put that in the agenda item. So I'll make sure those are changed. It'd be immediately, it'd be immediate if it's passed by the town council to June 30th, 2026. So it'll just be over a three-year period of time.
Okay.
Usually it's three years, but I had the clerks take a look at it today.
Okay.
All right. Got a first and a second discussion. So I would say it was brought to my attention from Counselor Dow. I know the liquor board has been hurting for an alternate. I believe they have three board members now. They have obviously for probably a few years now, they have never had an alternate or change. So Mr. Wandelier has graciously volunteered. He's a prior town counselor. Had a great discussion with him. I do know the former town manager had interviewed you, had a discussion with you, obviously. And I do have an email saying highly recommended and move forward. And I apologize, we have not moved forward faster to get you on the liquor board.
I know.
Sure you do. All right. Any discussion? Counselor Steves.
Yeah, just if you wouldn't mind summarizing a little bit, why do you want to go?
Why? Well, right now, I'm in the process of opening a reopening of Pub and Servic. The Highland Dorf, the brewery left, and that's my family, my wife's family. And so we're going to reopen the show, the thing like. So I kind of, I have an interest in the liquor laws and what they are because I wanted not, and the best way to probably do that for myself is join this board since they need help and I can learn a whole bunch of stuff. And it does no conflict of interest because I'm in salvage. And that's a story.
And you don't own any interests in the salvage?
No, well, you know, we own home. Yeah, yeah. I own a home, you know. And I'm on my son's home too, so that's about it.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming forward, put your time to volunteer. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Counselor Lozo.
Just a quick, quick thing, Fane. I know followed you as a councilman, did a great job and good volunteer. Coached your sons, fabulous, great guys. And I wish you the best of luck on the liquor board.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So you'll be on the agenda for Monday evening?
Monday evening?
Monday evening.
This coming Monday.
This coming Monday? I'll make sure that you're on there. Normally, what, obviously, you know how it goes, but there is two, three, four, five of the nine counselors that are here already.
Okay.
So if, six? I can't count.
Yeah.
So, all right. Any discussion? All's a favor?
Absolutely.
Now, Mr. Ball present. Thank you, sir. That was quick.
Yeah, that's it. Go home and eat.
You know how it goes with the government around him. That's the easiest part. Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll see you next Monday.
Thank you.
If the chairman's nice, he'll put you on the agenda early Monday.
Maybe last, right? All right. Gen item number four. Review, discuss whether to approve a plan for $30,000 through Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund or MPPF to complete a town hall facilities study for a total project cost of $60,200 for the town's 50% matching funds coming from Town Hall renovations project number 63390, raising 75% of the project cost per the grant requirements to cover temporary cash flow or $45,150 from the Town Hall renovations project 63390 until reimbursed. Entertain a motion to the council for approval and authorize town manager to sign any related documents. Ms. Dean.
Yes, there's an unobligated balance in that account of 45803.9, last I asked Karen, which was in Danbury. And so you would be asking to raise that 45150 and apply for the full amount of the 60,000.
That was the $200.
To be able to then apply for this Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund. When I initially brought in this gentleman, Steve Flukiewlansky, I'd actually worked with him at the Charlemont Town Hall because his other half lives up in Heath, in those parts of the Franklin County area. I'd asked if they would be, he's in Springfield area. I asked him to come look at the town hall, and he suggested this wasn't the right direction for the town because he thought you could do your windows and some of the other projects as sort of one-offs without obligating the town to be a historic building. That has to then be approved for any future work through the Mass Historic Commission. And then about a month later, I found some paperwork that found that we are already obligated to the Mass Historic Commission for any future work. And so I called him back and said, we have no issue with being obligated now. And so then he said, okay, then my suggestion is you go for the full amount of the grant, which is you can get, you know, up to 50% of a match. So if we go for the, this 30,000 times two, 60, he came in at 6200. And so we will be evaluating the, you know, maintenance needs. And one of the important aspects they encourage is that we look at re- adaptive reuse. It's basically what void areas can be used and for what. And so what I've asked is in the scope that they do a thorough interview of departments and find out what future needs are, and not obviously knowing what those needs are, but what they could potentially anticipate. And then how could, for instance, the basement, the area up in the dais? So if you think about the dais being unused space, how could you control for other ways of temperature control approaches might be to segment off that back portion, upper area? Because then all of a sudden, you've contained this one-third of a void area into new reuse. So these are the kinds of things they'll do within the study. And then my question to the town council is, I know that you, or I saw that you had a community compact best practice for facilities study. Should we ensure that that's taken into consideration during the time of this study? As sort of a jumping point?
Counselor Lozo.
If I may, just to step back, and when I was making a speech on roads and sidewalks, Counselor Dow, to his credit, brought up the town hall, it got a leak, and we just happened to have a rainstorm the day that he was making that speech, and he held it up and there was a waterfall behind him at the dais. My thing is, I mean, we fixed the roof, we addressed the problem. But in the building business, and I know you want to section off, you're talking about saving heat. I'm more involved with maybe an oversight of what are the problems of the building? We have a slate roof, we have copper gutters, we have brick refacing, we have tilting head walls. I think we need a long-term plan for the rest of the town hall. Whether that works into what you're talking about, I think we have to move in that direction. We probably will not do it right away. But if we can get the homework done on it, then we'll know what to do when we have to fight the actual fixing of it. I don't know if that answers the question of whether it belongs in or out.
So I, I'm just going to assume yes, that if you've done a facility study, that you're taking that, whatever facility study was done, and then you're incorporating into it? Yes, absolutely. I think we're all speaking the same language. We're incorporating into it all of the town hall's maintenance and future rehabilitation needs? And then it's encouraged by this engineer that you, as part of that, think about your adaptive reuse of unused?
Just to follow up, in my line of business, we fix the envelope first, which is the exterior of the building where we now go on the inside and then work on the interior of the building as the envelope is redone and sealed. That's the way we look at it. I think that's the way we should approach it all.
Thank you, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Counselor Lozo. We have a brick falling out, roof falling out, window broken. I don't know for how long. I mean, I agree with him, we should, we need to do the whole town hall pretty much. But it's important to winterize it first because you can work from inside and outside still going in, you know what I mean?
So, have I just read between the lines? What I think is we hire an architect, and the architect is using, right, he's not necessarily doing the envelope first. He's hiring subs to do the, you know, estimating the envelope. He's getting paid for the design on the inside. But then, once that design is done, how we choose to go forward and spend our money, we focus on the letterization first, right? So maybe that would then satisfy, you know, everyone's priorities, right?
Through, through, Chair, I think what we have to keep in mind is all the nice stuff we can do on the inside, if we do it before we do the envelope, if there were leaks, everything is going to be damaged by it. And that's why in the building business, we go from roof to jet work to stonework, so nothing can damage the investment on the inside.
Yes, Ms. Dean.
And I just want to credit Council Chair Daniel. So this is, thanks to him coming to me last fall and asking if we could look for potential funding sources. We thought of this, we thought of another potential source, but then ended up in the end not being eligible, and so now we're going forward. And then it was trying to follow the town council's requests of asking well in advance for potential funding sources from Karen to potentially be able to use existing line items that would be, you know, that seemed most appropriate.
Counselor McKedney? Did you, Catherine, did you have your hand up?
No, no.
All right.
Okay. I just have a couple things.
Yes, sir.
First of all, the town hall is under the jurisdiction of DPW, correct? I believe it has every time we get a budget, DPW, town hall. So I know it's not coming under DPW's subcommittee, but should DPW at least be involved in this?
Well, this is, can I answer, maybe Ms. Dean probably has a better answer. So just the fact of applying for this grant funds. I understand down the road, DPW is going to have a major player because she's the one who's putting it in through the process. That's all this is, like many other grants that we put through.
So then, we did do a major facility study in 2016, financial advisory associates. I mean, it made a very comprehensive look at this entire town hall and other buildings. And I would think that that should be utilized by these people that are coming in now, that they should take a look at that. I would think, I know that's seven years ago, but I would think that that would still be pretty true today. I don't think there's been that much change in town hall.
Did you want to answer that, Ms. Dean, at all?
Sure, that's exactly the point I was trying to make in the beginning, is that's what I've seen, that thanks to other community compact interests, Mark Teddy's had, excuse me, Council Mark Teddy's had, I noticed that there was that community compact facility study out there. I know that it's on our website for anyone to look at if you're interested. And that's what my initial instinct was also, is take this, you know, learn from it what you can, and then assess the rest of the, you know, assess the building today.
Just to answer also, that was one of three studies that we did, I think, 16, 18, and there was another one. That, that actually, I took a look at back in 18 because it was, it was a doorstop. There weren't, nobody was utilizing, it was piped through grants, and we got all this stuff, but nobody was utilizing. So hopefully, down the road with DPW's help, or subcommittee's help, pushing along a facilities maintenance individual, I think this, this may go a long way. And hopefully, those, that individual we hire on, if that's the way it goes, will actually take those and study them and maybe have to renew them or whatever it may be. That, I think that's the whole plan of attack, and hopefully it'll work.
So does anybody even log up the town hall renovations 2013, or do we even know what that was for? Because, I mean, I don't, I need to think that we're just some kind of a depositary, we put money into our account, nobody remembers when it was even funded. Was it fixed? Was it done?
That's what, I think that was the frustrating part. I know Counselor Daniel, myself, and Counselor Jovan in 18 were talking about this whole thing about possibly bringing about the schools, getting on board with the facilities. So that was one of our frustrations, that we apply for these grants, but then we don't do anything. And credit to Ms. Dean, has taken our master plan and actually started utilizing, like from Henry Street and all that, because finally, finally, it's kind of working for us in the right direction. We may not like it all the time, but that was part of that plan.
Yeah, it's also on facility.
But I think, but I think Counsel Karen Honolace came to the council at one point and said, stop putting money into projects, we need to get the projects done that we've already put the funding in. And I looked at Karen Honolace, I go, what? Because I just got on council, I go, you're telling me that it's not getting done, so we got a different problem as far as getting them done, and the money wasn't a problem. But I think we look at it holistically, I think we're headed in the right direction with this.
Counselor Steves and I also talked about, it was back in 18, again, because of the historical grant money for the buildings. We had this, and we passed it on to the town manager, saying, can we get some money for this? And nothing ever happened of it.
Yeah, he's fine.
So 2013, hopefully.
So in this grant, we, we got to batch, we're going to get a 50% match, but we got to come up with 75% first, and then they'll give us 25% back.
That's kind of weird.
Yes, Ms. Dean.
And, and when they explain it very clearly versus other grants where they said, they have a cash flow problem, they can't front that money, and so, you know, they want to make sure that we can. What they find is they work with small towns, and the small towns may not necessarily understand that when you sign a contract, you can, your accounting obligates those funds. And that means you may have to deal with things like shelter and modeling if you can't get the project done in time, et cetera. And so I think that some of these agencies will just, they will ask the towns to, you know, to raise those funds and then get reimbursed. Similar to the park grant, similar to the, there's a couple others.
I do have a question on the $30,000 that's in that account for the renovation. Did that have anything to do with the windows? Or is this completely off the mark? Because I know we set aside 30,000, maybe we brought it back in to stabilization, but I remember the town council prior to, we get on board, put 30,000 into windows in the town hall. And it comes up, it rears its ugly head once in a while. It'd be interesting to talk to Christine about this. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
What I would argue is even if it was in there for windows at this point, if you were investing in an update to your prioritization plan, and then you go for future funding, a future mass preservation project fund could match 50% also. And so you could then pursue the window updates with the 50% match through MPPF using, you know, whatever funds at that point are available. But I think that this might be, even if it was obligated to windows, this might be the right step. Because it sounds like, similar to the parks, what is the first priority?
Right. Ms. Shaney.
I think you'll look over those funding sources and find that over the course of time, that money has been transferred to some other projects.
We did, we did take some of these funds, and we put them in stabilization. It was over $300,000 we did a few years ago. And we keep doing that every year, where we take some of those funds that haven't been used and then put it back in the right.
Because I believe the stained glass window in the front, it was money, a lot of money at one time for that, and I was paying the bucks there. And I was never.
Fully realized. Counsel Steves.
I think as of, if I remember correctly back when we were talking about those windows project specifically, we were talking well over a hundred grand, basically.
Yeah, I think that's what came out.
Because of the stained glass, because of all historic, because they're like lettered.
It was way underfunded.
It went.
Yep.
So I'm curious though, will this, will doing this study enable us, put us in the track like for, like a historical, a historical commission grant?
So, if I may through you, Chair? Yeah, as just mentioned, so after you do the first pre-development grant by next year or the year after, you then could go for a, an MPPF development grant. So then that would be, again, a 50% match on and up to, I think the cap is 300,000 for potential projects? Don't quote me.
Because I remember, I know Oxford did their library about two years ago, and they ended up getting largely funded by the state, but the payroll wasn't as.
Any other discussions? All's a favor. Post? Adams, all right. Gen item number five. Review, discuss whether to accept the Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All, or SS4A, grant for $60,000 to be coupled with a Complete Streets Tier Two Planning Grant for a total project cost of $98,000. Entertain a motion to the town council to approve and authorize town manager to sign all the ready papers.
Boom.
Ms. Dean.
So you completed the Complete Streets Tier One, to become the Complete Streets community, that then tees you up to become, right, to then to go for the Tier Two funds? So you have $38,000 that's sitting with the state waiting for you to go forward with this plan, the Complete Streets plan. And the Complete Streets plan says, where do you need to improve on crosswalks, sidewalks, multimodal throughout the town? And then, we saw all this discretionary funding come out. So at the DOT level, the, this new Safe Streets for All grant came out, which to me sounded like it had a very similar agenda, except it's more aggressive about statistics towards reducing fatalities, zero tolerance for fatalities, and reducing serious injuries. And so I thought if you could combine the two, get the most out of the public funding, you could do a more robust plan. And so it will look at things like, you know, people keep talking about how to safely pull out of Morris Street, down by the East Main Street Rotary, you know, why, why aren't our rapid flashing beacons working? Why, why don't people abide by them? Or, you know, all these little issues will be put into this plan, and hopefully, we'll come out of it with a list of priorities, which you can then, you can include in future projects. So if you go to do a road project that's adjacent to one of the Complete Streets recommendations, you can access up to $400,000 in state Complete Street funds for a project. Or we could potentially apply for, I think, at the federal level, funds for, for that part of the project. And so it's all, you know, all about, the town's been doing a great job through the Main Street, West Street, these, you know, coupling of funds, leveraging funds, where if we were to do a road project, we would have other sources to complement the work. And things like Morris Street sidewalks could be considered.
Ms. Lawrence.
You said something about sidewalks. Would they be repairing sidewalks for us?
That would be nice.
Would that be part of that funding?
So the fund, this initial funding, again, is a plan. So it's to look at where it's all needed throughout the town, what things are needed, where, why, where, how. And then, once we've completed the plan, it opens us up to funding through both the state and the federal for sidewalk money, which is normally not available to us, right? We don't get sidewalk money through Chapter 90. We don't have, that's why the town's been doing a good job of trying to raise sidewalk funds, but otherwise, it's hard to find it. You usually, like with CDVG, I have a hard time using CDVG funds for just sidewalks. So this might be a better opportunity.
I know the sidewalks need to be repaired. I know that.
You know that.
Yes.
As you know. Counselor Steves.
One question I was going to ask you about is, if we're doing this study now, I know that a key element of the whole safety issue that this raises is being wrapped into the TIP project.
What?
It's being wrapped into the TIP project. That's one of the reasons why we're doing that whole project, is because of the safety concerns, especially the accident rate at that point. So I just, I do want to make sure that, that when we do this, we don't end up duplicating efforts for a project and incorporate that kind of stuff into doing this when it's going to become irrelevant in the year and a half.
Can, can I make mention, Ms. Dean probably knows better than I do, when they're doing this design stuff, and this is part of the, I think it's like one of the first requirements, so they want you to take a look at these sidewalks and these safety, the Complete Streets project before you even continue to move on. I think this is part of our, not that we have to go for it, it's just one of those things that's already built in, we don't have to worry about it. If it doesn't make any sense, then we don't have to worry about it as well. But I don't think it's a requirement that we have to go build into this, correct, Ms. Dean?
Yeah, so if I'm hearing both your questions, so Counselor Steves, yes, we will make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. If we've already redesigned an $8 million TIP project, or we know it's in the queue for two years from now, we will not ask for it to be evaluated in the scope. And then to Counselor Adams' point, if and when you go to do a road project, under the Complete Streets policy, you review whether you can do any multimodal improvements if it's within reason. And if it's within reason and you choose to go forward, you can potentially access Complete Streets funds. Or in this case now, with the new discretionary federal funds, you might be able to access those funds.
Yep.
To follow, can Complete Streets be used for drugs?
I don't, I don't think it's really intended, that's the intent of use, but I could be wrong.
Will, will there be any effort to look at some of the outlying, neat parts of the town that may, for example, not have, I mean, most of them have no sidewalks, or in some cases, you can barely walk on the streets. There it is.
I, I think that, yeah, I think that, like, for a lot of small towns where they have that situation, what they'll do is they will review it, and what they'll oftentimes suggest is, you know, if you wanted to do road share, right, road sharoes, or, you know, maybe some signage here and there. But oftentimes, Complete Streets are not intended for rural environments.
Yeah, but this is.
Anything else? Yep. Counselor McKedney?
So they will do the entire town of salvage, not just the simple corridor.
I, I think that dollar for dollar, we would focus most of our concentration where the highest level of traffic and multimodal transportation crosses. Where is that intersection? And so, you know, you're looking at those most closely, you obviously have a wonderfully dense downtown, and, you know, and then it starts to spread out very evenly, and so it would be proportional. You have most of your concentration in the downtown, and, and then you would have a probably cursory evaluation of your outskirts, with the exception of two of your public facilities, two of your community centers, two of your schools, two, you know, like, so for instance, the Gulf Flur Road will hopefully be suggested for sidewalks under this plan, et cetera.
That's your question, Counselor Steves.
Hartley, I was going to say that I wanted to make sure that we kind of prioritize the areas where a lot of kids walk, school.
Ms. Berno, do you have anything? That's okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor McKedney, yeah, my apologies.
Shouldn't the traffic commission be involved in this? We think that this would be, they would want to be involved in this, Traffic Commission, that'd be Woodson and...
Whoever it is, now it's probably going to be Benoit.
You'd be the director.
This is Benoit.
Now, the Traffic Commission, maybe Chief Woodson.
Yeah, and then Benoit.
And Benoit.
I don't know if he knows any of that yet, but I'm sure he'll find out. You're welcome. I'm just looking at the camera.
So this is just another, this is a study, so this has to be in order for us to do?
Yeah, this will be all applications, and then from that point on, I know Mrs. Bernoit will probably be truly involved, including the Traffic Commission, if they've got any issues down there. You all set? Anybody else? I did receive an email today about this as well, concerned so-called Safe Streets for All. Last time, they put in the flashing beacons and lights at the crosswalks, it made it faster for cars, but more dangerous for pedestrians. So who is safer for? Sells electronic cameras, the corporations sell electronic cameras, the corporation's selling more lights to us. I wonder pedestrian safety in, in our car-centric society, people need to be reminded that some people walk with strollers, wheelchairs, and, and et cetera, faster walkers. Please keep in mind, as we are sold things, even though through grants, if we really want safer streets, shouldn't we repair some of them? That's, Ms. Doyle.
So I commend whoever sends, sent that email. I wholeheartedly agree. You know, in this day and age, it's distracted driving. How do we fix distracted driving? I don't know through our plans, you know, we'll do everything we can, but obviously, there are many elements that are outside of our power. This subject is near and dear to my heart. I think people have heard me say in the past, my neighbor across the street was killed in a pedestrian crossing in East Hampton two years ago, and it was, she was eating an ice cream cone, casually crossing a crosswalk, and a person, a distracted driver ran her over. And so, you know, we want to make sure these situations don't happen. Unfortunately, they're increasing, not decreasing.
Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I was making this, maybe the, with this, by looking at this, doing the study, could we consider the idea of maybe closing down some of the streets and turning them into pedestrian walkways? Especially downtown, maybe we could use some of that area as a literally safe street Especially downtown, maybe we could use some of that area as a literally safe street, because you don't get run over, and turn them into something that would use as both as a pedestrian walkway as kind of a, as kind of a, um, tourist haven of some, of some sort, where we could do, do public grants on it and something like that, so. Can we, can we, do that kind of thing?
I've, I've heard a suggestion before about potentially closing off the top half of Hamilton from Main to the, um, to the statue and revealing the old.
Cobblestone, right.
And making it, you know, you had your street festivals there in the past, et cetera. And so, you know, it's, uh, it's all up for grabs, right? I think it's the town's opportunity to write the scope we want to for our plan. So I think the more feedback, the better.
I think.
Go ahead, please.
I think on the TIP project, I'll be planning on closing off Foster Street there, something.
Well, you can't drive through, but the road is still be a road. Hook Street.
Hook Street, yeah.
Nothing gets closed, per se.
Rerouted.
Directions get changed, yeah. So there's no.
Rerouted.
Anyone's welcome. Anyone's welcome to come down to the, the town hall basement to the economic development planning office.
So the design is downstairs?
And look at the designs anytime they want.
It's actually online as well. I think it's Civic, uh, what do you have it under?
I don't have it on the Civic Plus page.
Oh, I thought you did, okay.
That's a, that's a suggestion. Yes, absolutely.
So I will say this is another area that, um, I think it was two thousand eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, uh, we had a nice meeting. I think Ms. Dean had just arrived there, uh, with Complete Streets and trying to get that on board for the town. It got shot down by quite a few, uh, staff members. And I think some of these things she, she brought back up to the fore for, for us, uh, including pushing the Complete Streets. And then, um, this, this other one that opened the door. So just wanted to add that in there. Any other questions? All's in favor, opposed, and as all present? All right. All right, number six, review, discuss whether to apply for the expression of interest through One Stop For Growth to assess the eligibility of the Urban Agenda Grant to fund lights, a baseball field, and a Mass Works Grant to install infrastructure at the AAO campus. And obtain motion of the Town Council to approve and authorize the Town Manager to sign any related papers. So move. Ms. Dean?
Yeah, the Urban Agenda is a long shot, but I figured we could try. Um, it's already been funded through ARPA, but, uh, we can try to opt, if we can try to instead fund it through the Urban Agenda Grant, that would be better for the town. Uh, my argument is that this is a downtown neighborhood park, uh, with better, um, extracurricular, with extra, with better mentors such as coaches, being positive influences, keeping our kids off the streets, and in constructive activities. We are helping our urban center. Uh, and so we'll see if, if that flies. And then the AAO campus, this is the second round of this discussion. We did get more supplementary, um, materials from, um, Worcester Business Development Corporation, WBC, on behalf of Chick Norton, Franklin Realty Associates, and the Southbridge Innovation Center. Uh, and so right now, we're allowed to only submit two expressions of interest. However, when the application is due in June, at that time, we can apply for up to five grants. So maybe we'll come up with some other, um, suggestions at that time. But for now, we're just going to see what the state thinks about these two. It's a great time to get feedback from the state about whether they think these are viable projects.
Councilor Steves.
I'm, I'm good. Got more detail, I was afraid, because I remember the last time I sat down here. That was one of the issues that I had, it was the, with the lack of detail. Um, the problem is reading through, um, the AAO's project, it looks an awful lot like, despite more detail, exactly what they came forward with like two years ago. It's like ninety-nine percent all, it's ninety-nine percent public money on private land.
Ms. Dean's, Ms. Dean's got the answer for us.
Well, so the last meeting, I was very confused about the history, and I apologize. My brain was in other places during the CDVG grant and other stuff. But now that, when I sat down to look at this material, yes, this is exactly like it was two years ago. And what happened? They, they backed out. So we got feedback from the state that they needed to develop their project more. And then in the eleventh hour, they said, we might go for marijuana, we might get a marijuana business in here. We don't want the Mass Works money to mess up our, you know, public funds, to mess up our marijuana business dealings. And so they stepped, they stepped away, they never went forward. So this was potentially a viable project, uh, but they said, no, thank you at this time. Um, the, the year before that, Rosemary had applied, and that was the one that was definitely not developed enough. So Rosemary applies, two thousand and nineteen, the, the state says, no, it's not, it's not developed enough. Two thousand and twenty, they come back and say, okay, we think we're ready again. This time they say, nope, never mind, we might get a marijuana business. Twenty twenty-one, nothing happens? Or maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was twenty, no, Rosemary applied, twenty-one?
I think it was the year after, after Rosemary applied. I think there was a one-year gap.
Okay, so it was, okay, so nineteen, Rosemary applies, it goes nowhere. Twenty, no one applies. Twenty-one, they say they're going to apply, and then they back out at the last minute. That's what the councils were disappointed about, because we kind of held out for this Mass Works application. We could have otherwise applied for on our own behalf, and we didn't. And so no one applied. Then here we, then twenty-two, we applied last year, and we were awarded the East Works, or the East, East Main Street project. And so now here we are in twenty-three, and they're asking for this project again. Yes, it's all on private land. The idea with Mass Works is that you're promoting economic development, and so this is easily justifiable that you're investing in what someone's already coming in and investing in. You're, you're helping bolster that, that revitalization.
Councilor Steve.
Okay, well, I, I understand, I understand that, that argument. But as I said, I'm, I'm concerned about public money and private property. And I'm also concerned about wondering, what, what is the, what kind of agreement can we get from the AAO, from Franklin Realty, to make sure that we are using this public money in a way that, quite frankly, isn't corrupt? And that, um, and that can, can we get, work out some sort of agreement where, because we are, they're asking us to put in four million bucks of public funds, can, can we put, get some sort of dibs on, say, for example, some of their rental, some of their rent going to, going to the public coffers, so that we can take care of our own people? And anyway, maybe we can have maybe partial ownership in their, in their rent, or in some sort of an arrangement where our people need housing, we've got a whole bunch of issues with, with our, with housing in the community as a whole, and although they're building housing, and it's great. I'm thinking that maybe as, as a community, is there any way, I think it might be beneficial for us to sit down and figure out some way where if we're taking this much money to them and putting our name on the line as basically as the grantor, like we did with the other Mass Works application, I don't have a problem, because that's primarily, that's all public property. That's a public road that we're doing that needed to be fixed anymore. But in this case, being private, all private property, I would like to see something else coming back to the town to make sure that this is a fair deal.
Can I just answer real quick, like, maybe I'll, and Ms. Dean will caveat off that, but just throw out there. First of all, those, those affordable homes, all, some of these other buildings are being bought. The land's not being bought, the property's being brought, that, that the physical property itself is being bought. So I don't know if that's going to be, but that's the way business works. But I also say, we, I forgot that, is, is it, Ms. Dean, what, what's that call where we have the agreement?
The covenant.
Covenant, yeah.
We had a restrictive covenant, and they did say that they would revise it to.
Yeah, and they're going clean it up.
Whatever terms we wanted. But what I was going to, to say to Councilor Steve's comment is, in, in my mind, what I would see as fair is that the terms within it say, you know, what, what is public? When are those public, and when are those public places accessible? Should be clearly outlined in the agreement. And that they can't back out of the agreement for those terms unless there's both parties agreeing to it. And then I would say that it would be for at least the life of the improvements. So if these improvements are viewed as, you know, twenty-five years improvements, then this is a twenty-five-year covenant. And so not, not in perpetuity necessarily, but a, you know, but a dollar for dollar, we're investing these for, for whatever, public funds, for, you know, four million in public funds. In twenty-five years, we can say we got out of it what we feel we should, we deserve.
Obviously, the covenant there, there, we can expand upon that, and that Mr. Norton did say, he's willing to work with the town, and so there's a one-for-one there, whatever we need to do and pay attention to. Is there anything else, Councilor Steves, number one? Okay, Councilor Mark, can I?
Thank you. I did look at the Mass Works program from the, on the state's website. And what I'm, what I'm finding is pretty much, and I have to agree with Councilor Steve, capital funds from municipalities to make improvement to public infrastructure, public infrastructure that complements or supports or spurs private development. Is it available for, for private development? Because it seems to me, East Main Street, we got Mass Works for that, that's complementing his project. And I'm all for that. Mechanic Street, that's also complementing the entrance there. And so I'm all for that, but now you want to use it. How does property to develop its private roads and sidewalks? I don't, I don't know, because they're extra. It seems to me just reading the Mass Works program, that that's not what it's for. I'm actually calling some way around that, I imagine.
Ms. Dean?
So this idea came from Southbridge Innovation Center to us. This was not our, this was not our suggestion or our planning. So they're asking us if we'd be willing to go for this. I think they're trying to justify that definition by saying, we make these roads public, they therefore then serve the public. Within our campus, we create a public infrastructure. Now, I think, again, that would be something you'd have to carve out in the covenant. Uh, and then this is the opportunity for you to ask Mass Works, does it meet the definition? So you're going for the expression of interest, you're saying, here's what they're proposing, does this fit the bill? And then they'll tell us whether or not it's worth a harm for.
But the only problem with that, and this is.
Do we own the road?
Exactly, we don't.
No, 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 no. After we fix it, do we assume it?
So they say it's, if, 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 it's public, they maintain in perpetuity.
But we don't get the deed. We don't actually own the property.
What I'm saying, I had, like, like in a subdivision, somebody builds a subdivision, they turn it over to us, we own it. If they're going to do work into the facility, and then they plan on turning it over to us, and we're going to gain an asset out of it, a road, uh, what, that means everything on it, that front, that type of thing, that's a different story. And we're not getting that.
Exactly.
Okay, then the other thing that I have is, um, like I said, Mechanic Street in front, great idea, it needs work. Well, Piapi is doing some work on that this spring. So are we going to do that work and then rip it back up and redo it when they, when they do this? No, that doesn't make any sense to me. So some, there should be some coordination for it. We've already put that out to bid. Mechanic North, right there, at that entrance. So I'm not sure that would make much sense to rip that up. And the only, the other thing that I just want to point out is that we have a whole list here of public roads that need work. And I added them all up, they're close to four million dollars. We could use work on our own public roads, but whether it fits that Mass Works program or not, I'm not sure. It's supposed to complement a private development, and I get that, I understand that. There's a lot of private developments on the town, so that's all, that's all I want to say. Whole list here of roads that need work in this town, including Gulfwood, Ellis, Davidson Drive.
Ellis can hold off, we're good.
You're right, I didn't know you said.
It's tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I'll also, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from Ms. Dean, on that, or you?
No, maybe just for the public's, um, benefit, we could read the roadway improvements bullet that they had in that handout. It says, "Many of the existing roadway networks throughout the Southbridge Innovation Center campus are not reflective of the current municipal standard. The funds will be utilized to make necessary improvements to the internal roadway network to bring them to an acceptable municipal standard, including the incorporation of shared bike lanes where it's possible. Upon completion of the improvements, the roadway and pedestrian network will be continuously maintained at no cost, considering municipality. Nor in there does it say it will be public."
All right. Uh, Mr. Shaner.
Just a couple of things. It appears that Franklin Realty on a couple of occasions backed away from this to, for a change of use, I would say, like, you know. It concerns me that our staff does all this work, and then at the last minute, Franklin Realty pulls away from it again, and says, oh, we got somebody else to utilize. Because if you look at the scope of the projects that he said he was going to do in there, the only thing that's happened there is the development of the apartments.
True.
That's the only thing so far that's happened, and everything else is.
Yeah.
Everything else that's been associated with that development of the property really hasn't come to fruition because of the, the bridges. The new entranceway, uh, those kind of things. And, and he didn't go with those because he lost, I believe, some grant funding that he was applying for to change the entrance and do the bridges. And, and then the other thing that concerns me is that making those public access roads, and they're saying that they're going to maintain it. What happens if, if Franklin Realty folds up? And those public roads become our responsibility and our liability?
No, they're private.
No. We don't own.
Are they going to come to us? Are they going to come to us and say, hey, look at the, you know, we brought these roads up to standards and, and turn it over like they've done in other roads? I mean, we don't get a deed from, uh, like, say, Wall Street property. We don't get a deed from the roads. We just, they turn it over to the town, they become a town, except the street. I, I really hate to see something like that come to this community in a complex like the Maryupol, become a public access road, that we ultimately become liable for in the event somebody bellies up.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, so the prior restrictive covenant stated that they, with a vote, could change the agreement. The, if we were to change the covenant so that it's an agreed, right? It has to be agreed upon by both parties, then that would prevent that from ever happening. Um, also, just reading the opening paragraph, um, they talk about having, having donated the land for the creation of the Southbridge Town Common, providing a public gathering space. Today, they're seeking to continue the aesthetics of the Southbridge Common by providing a natural extension of the common space into the former AAO, opening the Southbridge Innovation Center campus for public access and use, and providing more outdoor recreational amenities for the area. So I think, George, it sounds like, yes, they want to open it up to the public. We need to make sure it's a reasonable amount of public access. And that, I think in the last agreement, there was talk about having, um, police detail. You know, how do we make sure it's secure? How do we make sure that there's blue lights or whatever we felt was necessary for, for public safety? And then not, not owning it, but then making sure that they own it, they maintain it for, uh, for the, for the road.
I just want to mention the, the bridges. Like, there, there was an issue. I have to look at what, what transpired, because there, there is still the plans for fixing all the bridges, and, and you get the kayaking area and all that, and the trails in the back. And I do know, last time I spoke with him, uh, Mr. Norton, that all those things are still moving forward. It's just taking time, they're trying to get the other affordable housing. They also have to, as DeeDee's mentioned, the Cal, uh, Central Massachusetts Police Academy that's going to go in there. And I know that there was a, at the time, he's got that master plan, but I do know the marijuana place, they were looking at and having conversations, uh, with some, some big facilities. That all fell through, and now that they have the agreement through the state of Massachusetts, bringing Central Massachusetts Police Academy in there, obviously they're renovating all that, including the classroom spaces, and it's just taking time, and they have to get the money from the state. But something about the bridges, I, I have to look back at my notes on the bridges.
Well, I think if you look back at the bridges, the, I thought it was some kind of grant that they applied for, for two million dollars or something like that, and they didn't.
I don't think they got it.
It fell through. And that's why they changed, or they didn't change the entrance. The only thing they changed in the entrance, no right turns, there's no stoplights there, there's no planned stoplights there, and.
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think, Mr. Shaner, I don't think that was ever part of the plan, even when I went to the zoning board of appeals.
The problem there with the bridge, that new entrance was going to be different, and.
They had talked about that. I've ever been going to the zoning board of appeals, because the parking spaces across the street are on the other side. Um, as, if, if they are to get, um, the, I think the bridge is no longer even, uh, in, in a factor, but I could be wrong. But I also know that the rest of that parking space that's over there, hasn't been developed yet across the street, will, will be developed once the other affordable homes are approved by DHCD. I think that was the last conversation we had. Ms. Dean probably knows more than I do on this.
After the last meeting, we've looked into, Eric and I looked into the, the special permit or the, whatever the ZBA terms were, and the, you know, our plans at East Main, et cetera, their plans. And so it, it's the two rapid flashing beacons, it's the, it's two new, it's two new lights, warning lights outside of those rapid flashing beacons. It's then at the, at the entrance, there will be, um, something. Um, but it's, you know, this is again for the future two, you know, two years from now, when they're developing. And so in the meantime, we want to include that in the Safe Streets For All, Complete Streets planning, right? All of that. How do we make sure, if we have concerns, that we don't leave it to a developer?
Anything else?
No.
You're all set?
Thank you, Chair, for you.
Baseball field, that's Henry Street, correct? Baseball field? That's Henry Street?
Yeah. KN Field.
What's baseball field?
Are we talking about the next agenda line?
No.
Now, this is all part of the, the.
Isn't it, that's, we're talking about the six.
Oh, 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 sorry.
I know we've been on AAO.
So the lights are for, um, the children's baseball field at Henry Street, yes.
But isn't it, uh, that's an update with the grant we got through, uh?
ARPA?
Yeah, that, isn't it? So. So that is more money for that?
No, it would be in lieu of.
Because, you know, I'm going to tell you the true, I don't feel comfortable, there's no amount. Uh, we just throw a baseball field for the kids, do you get the benefits? If I see more detail, more separate detail, money-wise. If I see more detail, more separate detail, money-wise, what's the grant for? How much the grant for?
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So it says, "Requesting funding towards approximately $125,000 expense to install the new lighting at the children's baseball field and neighborhood park. This is already funded through ARPA. If we can get the Urban Agenda grant money," the reason I didn't put details in there is because this is only the expression of interest. This is not applying for a grant. This is finding out whether this would be eligible to apply for a grant, and how much. Because I think, I have applied for $75,000 in the Urban Agenda grants in the last few years. I'm not sure how much we can apply for, and whether it can even cover the goal of the $25,000. So that's why I left out the amount.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor Lazo.
I'm having a problem with the American Optical campus. I'm not supportive of public money going into their campus. But then, why, why is it saddled with the baseball field, which I'm in favor of?
They're two separate. So the, so the state came up with this One Stop for Growth application portal a few years ago. You're allowed to apply for up to 10 applications. Each town is allowed to apply for up to five of those 10. You can do expressions of interest early on, five expressions of interest to find out what the state thinks of them. Or, in March, you can, you have up to two expressions of interest you can ask for opinions on. By June, you're applying. And so, right now, it's just the, we're feeling out whether the state would support either of these two expressions of interest, expressions of interest. They're two very discreet projects, discreet applications. They just all are through this one big, one-stop-for-growth expression of interest.
So if I vote in favor of it tonight, later on, I will vote on these individually? As projects?
So we brought them to you last year as one large motion. We could break them out, depending on how the town council feels. Yeah, I...
Who's that, the marijuana...
Oh, I would definitely like to break it out.
Right, just to, yes, you'd remind me if you have to.
Yeah, please, yeah, I'll have to remember that, too.
Yeah.
I can break it out right now?
Yeah, you could break it out right now, it's actually...
Yeah, but the thing is, we're just showing an interest. To me, we're just showing an interest right now, and then let them tell us what we can apply for or not, and then move along, and then we can split it up in a subcommittee.
They might tell you it's, no, you can't.
You can tell us no, and then we're from there.
Thank you, Chair, to you. I mean, we have a lot of places playground, too, for the kids to need a light before their AO. I would prefer to see more money going on the park we already own. They don't have lighting, they don't have nothing.
A MasWorx grant could only cover economic development stuff. So like, we covered a project at United Lands to help them. We've covered, in another town where I work, we've covered a bridge that was vital to access to the Vegas business. Those are the kinds of projects you can find.
Trying to understand it, that's all.
Yeah, you can, so MasWorx wouldn't be able to...
Why we're going to their private before ours, so now makes sense, the different...
We all say? Anything else? Counselor Steve.
I was curious, as far as the, I mean, since we have in fact already funded the baseball field via ARPA, wouldn't it make more sense to use that funding to go to something else? That's some other thing that the town really does need, that we don't have funding for as well. I mean, can we use that expression of interest to go for, say, for example, Mike was talking about doing roads work. We have a ton of roads work that needs to get done that we don't have money for.
Right.
Maybe we should use that for some other, for some project like that, that really needs to get done.
I'm not on camera, and I'm behind you, Counselor Steve, but I'm shaking my head. No, 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 no. So the One Stop for Growth, the applications, you know, we're always, I'm always thinking about all your needs, and how they all fit into the different buckets.
Yeah.
You have a better chance of using ARPA funds for roadwork than using any of these One Stop for Growth funds for roadwork. So you could, so that's where you could spin that argument, so you could save the money that you would've spent on the lights, and then raise it towards the roads.
When will we know about this?
You won't know until September, October.
This year, right?
Yeah.
So we have time, if we get this, let's say, $125,000 for the baseball field, you roll that ARPA money back in to the ARPA funds, to be utilized for roadwork or whatever it may be.
Does it roll back to the ARPA funds, or does it roll back to...
No, ARPA.
ARPA.
Right back to ARPA, it's not going to general funds at all.
But would that be, would that even be a legal use for this grant funding to basically reimburse money we already spent?
You're not...
We haven't spent it.
So you, the project is not allowed to go forward until we know exactly which funds are gonna be used. So, my apologies to the baseball teams that are waiting, you know, and excited, we put the brakes on the project until we know whether we get this grant. And if the town, if the town doesn't like that, then that's another reason to say, "We don't wanna go forward with your agenda." But in my opinion, if you could use these funds, it's a great reason.
So if this doesn't...
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
If this doesn't pass tonight, the ARPA money's still gonna pay for the lights, right?
Correct. And, in thinking about project management, for us to wait another year to do the lights on the field is a good thing.
Why is it a good thing?
Because we have so much that we're juggling right now, that it would be, it's one more project that we would have to manage in the queue this, you know, this summer's fall, that we're, and we're already completely, you know, in my opinion, we are completely to capacity. I am, I'm losing sleep trying to manage projects.
Fair well.
But Henry Street's already being ripped up.
Exactly. That's through three grants that I'm trying to manage.
And I understand that, but if it's being ripped up now, aren't we better off continuing with the light project and rip it up?
Once.
Once.
Yes.
Ms. Dean.
No, so, either way, you are, you're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna be able to avoid, you're gonna have to go onto the field, drive on through where the mowers drive on, and enter the field that way to replace all the lights. If we have to try to coordinate our playground project, the, all that project, with now a lighting project there, it would strain everything.
You have multiple proj, you got it, multiple projects that are going on right now, it's gonna be in the way of multiple things.
I still don't understand the fact that you're already got projects going on down there, you're already got trucks and everything, going over everything, you're gonna be putting in new fencing. I just don't understand why putting a project on hold, and possibly going back in there, and digging up and destroying what's been done.
Ms. Dean.
I might, I might be...
No, it's okay, it's a good question.
I love the ambition, I feel like, that's something I would say, right? Let's just go for it, let's get it done. The reason I'm saying this is because, so let's say, the town decides to go forward today with the ARPA funds that are available. You approve the, you, we go out for bid, it takes three weeks to go out to bid, at least. We come to town council, it takes three weeks to go to town council, we're now at a month and a half. So now, we're at the end of April. We have to enter into the contract, notice to proceed, project kickoff, we're lucky if we're starting this project by, eh, the end of May, maybe? And if they say that they can do it immediately, then we could potentially line them up to not get in the way of the other project. They're supposed to be finishing the project by June 1, for the fences. We're in the middle of, we're about to come to you about the playground, and we can't get the playground in in time. I'll bet you, they're not gonna be able to get the poles and the hardware and all that stuff, to be able to go forward anyway, until the fall, because of supply chain and construction issues. And then, we're gonna be, so then, we will have pushed it through, all for naught. But if we just give ourselves the breathing room and say, "Let's find out funding sources, let's give it until next year," all the work will have been done, right? They'll warranty their work for a year, and we'll find a way for them to get on the field through the access ways, so that they don't do damage. And, and, and I hope that that's the right direction, but it feels unrealistic otherwise.
Hey, I don't have a choice for you.
Okay. Counselor Dell.
Thank you. Chair, to you. I just wanna clarify what Counselor Lazo's saying, repeat his question pretty much to understand it. If we prove that tonight, you can come back later with suburbs, and we can vote on a field, not on the AO, if we have to, correct?
If we come to subcommittee, if, if...
Do you understand what I'm trying to...
I do, so, let's say the state comes back...
Hold on, Ms. Dean, go ahead.
Let's say the state comes back and says, "These are both viable projects, you're welcome to apply for both." Then, we would come to subcommittee before June, and ask for permission to apply. So we can, like I said, you know, forgive me if I forget, but we'll try to remember to just separate them into two agenda items, that's all.
So we'll be completely separated each other?
Thank you.
Yeah. Hold on, Ms., uh...
I'm just not comfortable with, it's gonna be separated. I'm just afraid if we vote yes, and then it goes yes upstairs, then they go, "Oh no, we can separate it." That makes you a little nervous.
So, as Ms. Dean had mentioned before, maybe I can answer this, is because the state came up with this new type of process, we're allowed to go up to so many and request so many. But that doesn't mean we have to lump them all together. So that, we put them all in five, we don't have to lump them all in five, we can go one, two, three, four, five different agenda items. Because there're gonna be different grant requests. Totally different. And basically, what this does is it goes to the experts at the state, supposedly experts at the state, and says, "Ms. Dean, you're good for this one, go check out some," they'll give them references, possibility, you know, who to talk to next about, maybe just the AO process, and then somebody just for the lights process, and they go to the experts out there. And that's the whole process. Purpose behind is one, one stop stop.
We're gonna get the money funded. The kids, they're little, they can't get it. Can I have a follow?
Oh, Ms. Barron.
I just have a question about the Henry Street field. I haven't been there in years, so are there existing playposts there now, or is that something new?
They will be new. Yeah, the boys, the kids' baseball, that's one other reason I'm justifying this in the Urban Agenda, is a place to be after dark, right? So if they'll have extended hours during fall and spring for practice, then they can play later, more activity at the park means it's a safer place to be for everybody.
So that, um, so then I had a two-part question.
So then, are the cables gonna be on the ground?
Because where he was saying, if they're digging everything up, that they have to dig up again to put the cables in the ground for the light posts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think we make good money here. Counselor, I can't...
My only comment is that if you don't split it up, and she sends this up for the AO complex, and then we say, "We don't want it, now we're not gonna be able to use that money for anything else." So I think we should decide tonight.
There's two separate pots of money, so...
No, but we won't be, once we, once we apply for the MasWorx, for the AO project, and the council says, "We don't wanna do that," are we then not gonna be able to apply that MasWorx grant, and anything else? Or are we just gonna leave that, once again?
If the council was to vote, "No, on Monday night, I can't submit an expression of interest for the MasWorx," could you amend your motion on the floor to say that you can apply for the Urban Agenda? And there are, again, just expressions...
And what I'm, what I'm saying is that, it's either the AO complex or not.
For the MasWorx.
For the MasWorx.
And I make a motion?
What else do we have?
Hold, hold. Yeah, just...
We've got tons of roads.
But Ms. Dean, just respond that, or if the council, I can just let them finish up the conversation.
Can I make a motion, separate them right now?
We can, we can separate them. And what's your motion?
And we'll have two different, like, whatever, A, six and six, six or six A, and we do them separate, agenda, we'll vote on them separate?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do that. That's a, it'll need a second, huh?
It'll second.
Okay, so we got first and a second. Uh, JD slash... Okay. Ben? All right?
I hope Ms. Dean's never had a Ms...
Yep, Ms. Dean, go to discussion.
So, Counselor, not to the, to the motion necessarily? So should I table my vote?
Go ahead, Speaker, we're at a discussion phase right now.
Martin's asking if it's, you know, the AO or nothing for MasWorx. I haven't thought of any other potential MasWorx projects. That might be something that the DPW wants to think out loud about, you know, could, it's just, you've gotta be able to justify the economic development piece. And so, I don't know if we could submit an expression of interest for MasWorx, and then apply for something completely different. Um, yes, that...
Which is why you should keep it and split it up, then. Because then if you split it up, so we don't wanna go for the AO project, we got time to come up with another project.
How much time do you have, Ms. Dean, for you to apply for this?
This one's due next Friday.
We'll come up with something, I got a whole list of roads here, I'm telling you.
Okay. Okay. I lost.
Yeah, but I think what's happening is, is that we're missing what she's saying. This MasWorx has to promote economic development.
Right, you just can't do an infrastructure...
And necessarily, repaving Ellis Road isn't economic development.
It's not?
No. How's it gonna be, how's it gonna...
There's no development up there?
How are you gonna do economic development up on Ellis Road?
Well, there's also Gulfwood. Gulfwood's a million dollars.
How are you gonna show...
There is a project going on up there right now.
You've got five days.
It's not as big as the...
Hold on a minute, guys, I got it, I understand the argument on both sides, but we've only got a few days for, for Ms. Dean to put stuff fucking into this.
What she's asking for is only sending out a, like, a letter of interest towards this. If they approve that, then at that point in time, you can separate it to two separate projects, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you would have to choose, you would have to choose before June which one to go for.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have to have feedback on a project to buy through.
Okay.
So you could find out, okay, is this, is the AO a viable project? They say yes. You say, "Well, we still don't want it, we wanna go for something different." And then you approve that through the town council, that's completely fine.
Okay. Counselor Lazo.
I'm a no vote, across the board on this. The reason why I don't wanna delay the Little League, instead of wasting your time on this grant, put our energies towards our fields. I'm not interested in bringing the AO and fixing the roads if we don't own it. I don't know if economic development is replacing sidewalks in front of businesses, where it looked like a earthquake went off in front of some of these businesses, I can give you a list of them.
That is a great suggestion.
These are the kind of things, these are the kind of things that...
That is true.
Well, no, I mean, many places, but I'm saying...
I love that.
Let me finish. So for me, I'm all AOed out when it comes to this. Um, so, and as far as the baseball field, put the project on the ARPA, run it forward. If, if it gets delayed because you're overworked, then it's better than going all the way down, get the answer and we can't get it, and we gotta go back to the drawing board. So for me, I'm a no vote across the board with all due respect. Uh, thank you.
However, we wouldn't be going back to the drawing board, we would just be at that point going forward with the Arpa grants.
I don't wanna delay the Little League deal at all.
Okay. Council Down.
Thank you, Chair, to you. You always talking about the baseball field. It's a two different one, one for the little kid, one for the older. So if that, the ARPA money went for both field or only one?
Oh, we put it for both. They're just two separate buckets, one was to upgrade the adult, the other one is for new at the children's.
So we do, gonna have a, a light on a small field because they don't have light in, in the past.
Are those both in the little fields or what?
Just the one, the game field.
So if we go for the money, uh, for the field, that will go and more, uh, update on that little field or we just have to apply it only for the light?
So if I'm getting this straight, this money that we apply, let's say we get a hundred and twenty-five, we have to come up with five because we, we did ARPA for a hundred and thirty, or just say if it's one for one, a hundred and thirty. So we'd have to come up with five, which would be just the five thousand from the ARPA. Or from wherever, something small.
What, what council Lazo say, what council Lazo say that it's that will apply that, not because, uh, that specifically, but example seventy-eight Pleasant Street, it's, it's a restaurant, it's active people. Uh, the PW or the water department, uh, six years ago, that took half the sidewalk to replace a water hole there, shower valve, forever, and still three inches, uh, you walk and you can, you know, stop down three inches, no sidewalk at all. That money could be applied to similar like that or just have to go through the field or AO or, because I, again, sidewalk, uh, I don't know how you're gonna look at it, it's, it's private development or, or town development, I don't know. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Ms. Dean.
I think the sidewalk suggestions near businesses is a great suggestion. And it's, it's just, so two points of clarification. I didn't put a number in for the lights, I can correct that to state in the expression of interest that it costs a hundred and thirty thousand. Excuse me, the last I knew, I thought it cost a hundred and twenty-five. So I would say a hundred and thirty thousand, what can, what can the state do if anything? And then maybe with the, with the, um, Mass Works, I can say, we have this proposed, we also wonder if instead we could do sidewalks in, in front of our businesses, that is more meaningful to us. Yeah. And I don't know, you know, I do, I am happy to try to be flexible and get what we want. Um, uh, and, and I'm not sure if there's room for that in the expression of interest, but if there is, I can make sure to try to speak it.
Okay.
Might you continue? So we can, we can know about that before the final vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we'll get a straight answer, but we can try.
Council Steve.
Um, what happens if, um, when you get the results back from the state, say they approve one and reject the other? Would we be able to use the, the, say, say, say they approve the urban agenda grant and they reject the Mass Works grant? Uh, would we be able to reapply for something in this round for other funding for the Mass Works product? Like say, for example, using this for sidewalks work or, or whatever? Without previously stating?
Yes, you can apply for, without feedback. You can apply for anything you want without feedback. This just kind of, this tees you up for whether your project is likely.
Okay. Council Lazo.
So the amendment that's on the floor, it's review and discuss whether to apply for expressions of interest through the one-stop growth. The eligibility of the urban agenda grant for the funding of lights of the baseball field. That's number six. And number six A.
Right.
Um, if we vote on that amendment, that we split it, and then we go to six A, and it says the same wording, reverent, review and discuss, express interest through one-stop, growth access eligibility urban grant for the funding of town sidewalks in front of businesses. If that says that, I'll vote for it.
If you make the motion, do that.
I will do that, I'm asking you, is that all right? No, no, your motion's right.
That, I mean, that's the, this is the, at the pleasure of the council, right? What you wanna go for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's in front of us right now when we split it is number six.
Yep.
So if there's no further discussion on six, we'll vote on that, and it's strictly the.
The lights.
And I will structure the other motion.
Okay, so the six is the light specifically?
Right.
For the Little League field. All right, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Just the little.
Okay. All right, unanimous vote present.
So you're just voting on.
Just the amendment right now, now we'll go and vote on six. So six is.
Six A.
Six.
Yeah, you just, you just voted, you just voted.
You just voted.
Approved splitting the.
Right, we just, no, so six A, or six.
Six.
Six will be the lights.
Right.
We also, I'll, I'll make sure the motion's correct for that. All those are fa- go ahead.
Go ahead, that's good, you're right.
So all those in favor, any other discussion on the lights itself specifically? That's six. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, unanimous vote present. So I'll put that as six. And that's five, zero, zero. Okay. Now, six A.
Will be.
Will be, all right, now.
It's the same motion. The only thing we're changing, in other words, the review and discuss whether it will apply for the expressions interest through the one-stop, the same wording.
Yep.
Eligibility for the urban agenda grant to.
No, for Mass Works.
Mass Works.
I mean, Mass Works to, and fund the infrastructure of sidewalks in front of existing businesses. Or businesses.
Well, it currently.
This way here, you might have, I mean, you go to 12 Crane Street. You go to 12 Crane Street, you go to Pleasant Street, we can make a list of sidewalks, they look like they were blown up by dynamite.
So, all right, so we've got a motion on the table for six A.
The motion on the table for six A currently is to install infrastructure at the AO complex.
Correct.
That's what you're currently talking about.
Right. He amended that, he amended that.
He hasn't yet, cause there hasn't been a second.
I amended that to take AO out of it.
And put the sidewalks.
And put the sidewalks.
I need a second on that.
Businesses and the town itself.
All right, let me write this down, cause I will, well, maybe this will be ready for Monday here. All right, see here. So, and then Catherine, you said, you seconded that? All right, discussion on that. Question? This is specifically to utilize a Mass Works grant for sidewalks, the rebuilding of sidewalks or refurbishing them in front of, what would you, what would you say?
Businesses.
All businesses?
Commercial building, uh, commercial businesses.
Commercial businesses?
Right.
Okay.
Maybe we should specify more specifically, cause I know Main Street's really bad.
No, 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 no. No, we're all done. Let's go with that, and then we'll, we're into DPW.
You can just be funny all the time for Main Street.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, I, I got it. Gentlemen, no, that's a good question to ask that. My question here is, I, I, funds. Uh, do we specifically state how much funds do we want within this Mass Works grant?
Four million. I don't know.
We don't have enough personnel to.
Four million, great, but how much, do we have a list of necessary sidewalks?
What's that?
We're gonna.
Hold on, Ms. Dean, just, Ms. Dean, and then I'll get to the right to the council's Steve's. Go ahead. Did you have anything to say?
We will know that after the complete streets, the safe streets for all grant. It's completely, I don't have a realistic number.
All right, are you okay with putting this in, just as, with your, the amount of work you've got going on?
Yeah.
Okay. Council, no, I wanna continue on what I was just saying a minute ago. So my only concern here, is I'm not opposed to this, my concern here is we continue to give DPW a lot of money every single year. There was a time where we were giving, I think fifty, fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year for sidewalks, right? When, uh, Ms. Blakely was here, she didn't say she had enough personnel. Hold, hold on, guys, Ms. Dean? So our problem back then was we didn't have enough personnel to get this done. I'm not saying that you can't contract somebody out, all right? I'm just telling you, that's what the excuse was last time. We, we were giving fifty, sixty thousand a year to DPW to do sidewalks and they never got done because there's always the excuse that they didn't have enough personnel to do it. Cause I think they were just contracting within the house instead of outside. My only concern is, let's say it turns out to two hundred thousand dollars, right? Is, who's it left up to? Uh, is it up to the council or should it be left up to the DPW?
Council.
Okay, so I think we have to make that clear when that time comes along. Um, can we do the work by contracting outside?
Yeah.
Okay? All right, I'm just asking the, the question, cause we keep on giving money and then we keep taking it back, cause they don't utilize it, so. All right. Council Steve's and then Council Lazo.
Um, I, I agree with you, that's, that's on, on the other side of the issue, first and foremost. Um, and I think, I don't see any reason why, if we have a good list of all the sidewalks that we need and the DPW probably has it, um, and some, that'll give us some guesstimate of what it would cost to do that. If we could put it all out as one sidewalk project and get it all done at once. And do, don't, I mean, I, I generally like the idea of doing these projects in-house, but if we don't have the staff to do it, let's get it done and hire somebody to do it with grant, with, with the Mass Works grant money to do it.
If we can do that.
If we can do that, we'll have money, it won't be coming out of our budget. We'll have, be able to hire somebody, get it all done at once in one, one or two years. Fix all these sidewalks in ways that desperately need them, cause we're, they're trenches in some places, as we all know. You know? So I think that this idea would make a lot of sense to get this done.
If this, if, if we sell it right, if we can sell it right, that's what I say. Ms. Dean can sell it right.
I think she's good at that, yeah.
Okay. All right, Council Lazo.
Okay, you know what?
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw a curve ball. So if we're really gonna rethink projects, I'm just going through the vault here and I'm thinking about all the different, um, wish lists. What about from River Street to Pleasant Street? You've got, that's not in the scope for River. And you could justify Dexter Russell as the economic development. And you could, and, and we just met with them about the, they are, um, a party of interest for the rail trail. So we had VHB, Mark Karen, Eric, all these people went and sat with them and talked to them and they said, it's great that you're doing River Crane, can you finish? Can you do the rest?
That makes lots of sense.
And so I wonder if that might be.
Is that down to Pleasant?
Yeah.
Straight down, so River Crane all the way to, uh, Pleasant intersection? Is that what you're looking at?
Basically, yeah, that would make sense.
Wouldn't it be part of what, is that what you're saying?
Can I talk?
Hold on there, hold on, hold on. You're talking, hold on, Ms. Dean, Ms. Dean's gotta go to the floor, then I'll.
I'm gonna blow Ms. Dean's property up.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, yeah, so I'm just thinking that, the sidewalks potential.
It could very well be.
But, you know, again, just if you're gonna think about, of different projects, that would be one that I would ask you to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Council Lazo, you have the floor.
Listen, this is a no-brainer game. Let's stop catering to the millionaires and start thinking about the small businesses as well. You know, like little businesses that got fifty feet of sidewalk that's blown up. 12 Crane Street, which I brought up, has no sidewalk, paved, tipped. Uh, I think we need to do it through DPW, the subcommittee in economic development, where businesses can go into the economic development area and don't earmark the money. Have these businesses come in, these business people, and say, look, we would like to know, go to their sidewalks. Every little storefront that you know has a bad sidewalk. Don't do just one person again. Let, let's make this special. Let's make this where the little guy can walk in and say, I got twenty-five feet of storefront and it's like this. Uh, you can ask Dee Dee over here who pulled the header on Main Street, whether the differential in the sidewalk in front of the bank. I mean, we're not dumbbells, we don't need a road study to walk down a sidewalk, face plant, everyone would have surgery. I mean, this is what's happening. So for me, Peg, like many of your programs, they come into you and they say, I, I, I really, and make it public, where we have funds, if this comes in, where we have funds, we, don't bother DPW at all. Just go in and say, we're gonna sublet this to a, to a subcontractor. We need fifty feet in front of this, twenty-five, two hundred in front, whatever it is. But we need to make it look like your department, council are taking care of the little guys. Because AO, Russell, all of them, got plenty of money to take care of a lot of stuff.
Okay. Are we kind of in agreement with that? Josh, okay. I understand what Ms. Dean's talking about, maybe that may happen. Maybe the extra money that we have for DPW for the sidewalks and do the little guy too at the same time. Council Marquetti. You're all set, let's, let's move this along. All right, Council Steve.
Just one thing to add to this, I think that's a good idea, the one thing I think we need to make sure is that we put them all in the place so that we don't have like fifty foot, fifty feet here, and then somebody who doesn't come forward and big gap here and then a hundred feet over here. We go, actually, if you get enough people in one stretch of a road, they just, it all gets done.
But it's gonna be, Ms. Chairman? It's gonna be all over town, no. I'm saying it's all over town. But the thing is, if you, you're like, like you have a section of a sidewalk that's bad, then the section's good. And it's always in front of the business that's blown up. But I agree, it's easy to do one run, but it's not gonna be like that, and I think it has to be pick and choose who to prioritize.
All right, yeah, one, one more thing.
Go ahead, Council Down.
Thank you, Chair. Put it on the DPW, we have a lot of money for sidewalk, it's not moving, you don't bring it forward. She can apply for the money now for the sidewalk and we can decide where we're gonna put it after. I mean, there's plenty of money there.
We're just applying at this point.
We fight, we fight for sidewalk, and we have a lot of money and nobody touch it. Go ahead, please, get the money, don't point it, we're gonna go, we'll decide later, thank you.
Revision for tomorrow night.
All right, gentlemen. Council Steve's last, let's move along. Thank you, sir.
If we already, and that's true, if we already have this money in an account for sidewalks, could we use that as, as, um, seed money for the Mass Works grant to make it more palatable to the state? And say, we have this money, so it's like, we need extra assistance, cause we have so many sidewalk problems.
Take it out of free cash.
The contract and stuff, contractors and stuff like that, so that we can say, here, we have, whatever it is, I don't remember how much it is now, but we can, want a million dollars from the state, we can do it all at once, get it all done.
You can use ARPA funds too. You could all do all these things, but there's a lot of great ideas and like you said, good problem to have. Um, but sometimes it over complicates itself and we, we, we start as animals starting doing it, so. Um, Council Dan, uh, Chair Danny.
Through you, Council Lazo, do you have a ballpark figure for what linear foot concrete sidewalk would go for?
Right, right now, no, because the volatile pricing on concrete right now is crazy. But the number one thing that ties us down, like you see the money sitting there. Our DPW should get off and sublet it. Spend the money, it's gonna cost you more, but use the money to fix sidewalks with a subcontract if you have to.
Okay, what I'm getting at, my concern is, is I'd like to have a ballpark figure of some sort based upon linear feet of, if, hear me out, we go to the DPW, they say there are different areas, fine, it's roughly, roughly, um, five thousand linear feet of sidewalk that we're gonna replace. Five thousand times ten cents is fifty bucks, or whatever it is, five hundred bucks. And then Ms. Dean can, in her letter of interest, say that we're looking for ballpark figure of this amount of money to repair this amount of linear feet of sidewalk, and that's all I'm getting at.
Right, no, and I get it. A lot of times when you sublet it, you're gonna have to pay the rate.
Right.
Because of the money. So it throws you into a different square footage price than where I am, I don't pay the rate. You know, I could do sidewalks in, in a different manner, so you would have to, you know, I think the Petro Mason is one of the ones that was used at that, he already has a rate put in. And what happens is, if they have money, they usually hire him to do it and then he does it by that rate. So I think they have that at DPW.
Now, what the other, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
What I had to ask also is, if I get with Christine to find out how much money we have in sidewalk funds unless Mike's got it or Council Marquetti.
Uh, actually, the kind of answer, um, Chairman Dan's question is, just quick, quick Googling comes up, it comes up to six to twelve, twelve dollars a square foot.
With prevailing wage?
I, it just, I don't, it doesn't specify.
That's not with the rate.
Turns out to be fifty.
Right, yeah, it turns out to be more. I just think that when you look at a sidewalk, and into the chairman, some of your sidewalks are three feet, four feet, seven feet. So depending on where you are in town, and that's why I think that if the economic development, it comes through economic development, to the businesses, it looks like we're servicing our community.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Dean.
Yes. So Chairman Daniel's asking how much a Mass Works grant in general? So although AO's asking for four million, typically they're one million dollar grants, you can ask for more. So we assume they'll be about, we'll ask for a million dollars? In the letter of interest, what, you know, could we get up to a million dollars for sidewalk work if we were matching whatever's in the sidewalk funds? Is that what I'm hearing, should be the right direction? And then what I'll say is, anecdotally, we just finished the slum light survey, we know of fifteen thousand linear feet of, of fair and poor condition sidewalks in just our downtown, and, and that doesn't reach our little village. So, you know, nothing will tie us to it, but it will show that the need is there.
So I'd be very careful about that sidewalk fund, I don't know if there's, the equivalent could turn into only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so I, I would, I don't even know if I'd add that in there, but you know, you know better than I would what you wanna put in there, but I think the big thing is the safety of pedestrians down our commercial areas.
And then I'll say, with the potential for magic.
But it, it, it being an economic development, you would be doing this with commercial property? Would that be labeled in it?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And safety and people's walking.
Yeah, cause you.
Any other, all right, all those, all those in favor? So this is the, uh, six A.
Okay.
All right, this is the amended motion to utilize, uh, Mass Works grant for a sidewalk.
In commercial districts.
In commercial districts. Did I write that down?
You haven't voted to approve the amendment yet.
We already did.
We already did.
We already did the amendment. The amendment was to split it.
No, but then they. Then you made the other amendment. You haven't voted on that.
But I did, oh, you didn't vote on it, yes, you're right.
Where he did a motion a second on his amendment.
Right.
So you have that on the floor, you've been debating it, but you haven't voted on it.
Yeah, then we gotta vote on that.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amended motion.
No, no, it's of the amendment, you haven't, you haven't voted on the amended motion. You haven't got enough.
You gotta vote on the amendment first.
Okay, all those favoring the amendment. Okay, five, zero.
Now you're.
All, okay, motion's on the table, for the amended motion is approved, all those favor? Five, zero.
So the AO's out.
Good job.
And what I will say is a soft landing, right, for them is that, you know, who's to say in the future, once you pay attention, invest in yourselves a little more, that they can come back to the town for a potential future grant? Is that fair?
That's fair.
Could they, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
They deserve, everybody's open to it, so, okay.
They, they're, everybody's open to it, so, okay.
Good to go. Seven. Review, discuss, payment of prior year invoice telegram and gazette, amount of seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents from account number zero, zero, one, one, eight, zero, point, five, three, zero, 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 specialized services entertainment motion to town council.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this at all? All right, all's in favor, opposed? Now, so it'll be a two-thirds vote, it was prior fiscal year, right?
Is prior fiscal year two-thirds?
Prior fiscal year, it's a two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds at nine-tenths.
Two-thirds. I, I've, I've never done nine-tenths out of two.
There's, there's a few quirky things like at town meetings that require nine-tenths.
I've never heard of that.
It's, it's, I see it after, I see it pop up every once in a while and it needs to be covered.
You watch too much Dr. Google.
All right, let's go, number eight. Review, discuss whether to rescind the motion from January ninth, twenty twenty-three, agenda item number twenty-three, to vote to approve entering an agreement with either Childscapes or M.E. O'Brien and Sons Incorporated for the playground equipment and, and servicing of McCann Fields for up to one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars using operation, operation services division contract FAC one, zero, four, funded with the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities or park grant, maintain a motion to the town council for approval and authorize the town manager signing related paperwork. We are unable to guarantee the delivery, because we were unable to guarantee the delivery installation before June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, good question.
We don't have most, anybody know, the first and the second, or we're going to?
Oh, second, you had a lot on, understand that. Someone explain this to me.
Okay, got, got to jump.
I don't understand this.
Ms. Dean, go ahead.
Sure, so this relates to the following three agenda items.
Yep.
So I guess when you talk about wanting to do one more project on the field, that's what, it just makes my head spin. Right now, I'm trying to get, we, we are in a good predicament where we had an extra hundred and thirty thousand dollars to spend at McCann Fields because we got a low bid. Rare is that this town gets a low bid. So low bid, grant is for X amount, low bid, frees up money, we didn't even know we were going to have enough to finish, uh, to include playground equipment. Now we've got plenty to include playground equipment. When we went for the preferred choice, uh, equipment, they could not guarantee it to be delivered and installed by June thirty. The grantor could not allow an extension. And so I, I did not hem and haw, I just got creative. So we have three buckets of funding, uh, or we have two buckets of funding right now. We have the, um, this CDBG for fencing and shade structures, and then we have the, the park grant. If we just flip the funding and we use the park grant funds for the fencing, we've gotten two quotes from, um, Child and Fence that they can, they can do it within the one thirty and they can complete the work before June thirty.
That's a good name.
The playground equipment will then, we won't, we won't sweat it. We will then get the extra money from ARPA funds and from the money that we have sitting waiting for the basketball upgrades, um, basketball court upgrades. With those three sources of funding, we can afford to pay for the playground after the fact. CDBG, I asked them for the extension, they're usually more flexible with the extensions, so it feels like this is a manageable way of ensuring that we are able to use the funds that are coming to us. Without making compromises.
Questions?
So just to clarify then, um, so, so we're still doing the, um, the playground work, which of the contractors ended up doing it? Childscapes or M.E. O'Brien?
M.E. O'Brien, which I was warned from the start was going to be a longer delivery time. And, and don't you know, like, all, you know, um, well, whatever the circumstances are, I'm talking to them last week and they say, we can, I'm sure we can get it to you, I'm sure we can get it to you. But I say, I can't, I can't say I'm su- you're sure, I have to have it in writing before I can agree to this, because it's all, right, I'm left holding the bag.
Yep.
And so I can't leave this to risk. I could see if the chips fall where they're supposed to, but I'm, I don't want to be that naive, and so I'd rather do it this way.
That makes sense, okay. So, so then you're assuming that they're going to get, so that work will be, get, get done in the next fiscal year probably?
It will, it, they, they think they'll have it to us in June, they just can't guarantee it. So if it comes in July or August and gets installed, it's no big deal. Okay, okay.
Any other questions? All's in favor? Opposed, five, zeros. Number nine. Review, discuss whether to approve the funding of McCann Fields baseball and basketball fences not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars through the park grant to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, entertain a motion to the town council for approval and authorize the town manager signing.
Two more.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
The town has already approved the request to go forward with child defense for the baseball field, and so now we'll be bringing you a quote from them to go forward with the basketball. Their funding will be approved and then they can get this all done by the thirtieth. I think, I've heard from a many of people, the basketball court fences have to be fixed. Unfortunately, they have fallen in, we tried to do it on the chief and it's now needing to be repaired. There is the funding through the Henry Street basketball court funding that can be used, and then we'll be going to the ARPA committee to ask for funding to be used, um, for the playground. So you have a net amount of, you know, X funds, and we're adding a little bit to it to then get this, this extra scope in. And, and I would say, all for the best, you'd hate to do all your upgrades and then have this dilapidated fence sitting in the middle of it as your, you know, the, you know, bringing down the, the quality.
Discussion on that. Okay, all's in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Counsel Marquetti, I'm sorry.
My, my only concern is that, that basketball fence was destroyed. It wasn't just falling down, that was somebody vandalizing and destroying it. And sometimes I feel like when we go back in and we replace something like that, we're just rewarding them for this kind of destruction. So I would just ask, you're going to do it fine, but going forward, if that happens again, I would say take the fence out. You're not going to take care of it.
That's a good point.
I don't want to keep paying.
Thank you, Chair, for you. We have a, it's going to be camera now, so we're not going to talk about it, but it's going to be up and running, so we know who destroyed it in the future.
Counsel Steves, okay. So the only thing I would say this is, is I went down there because the prisoners did that with no oversight. Um, they did it on the chief like Ms. Dean stated, that it was on the basketball court. They put no, no piping at the very top, and if you take a look at the, uh, side towards Knight's Automotive, it's not even even all the way through. It was shoddy work from the get-go. I will say this, as a kid who played and bounced off of those fences, you're always going to have that proverbial butt out a little bit, because we, the only way I could run it any faster was to have a little bit of push. But I agree with you, we got to take care of the product, the, the stuff that we do have, but we'll always have beautiful designs out there somehow.
That fence at the basketball court's been Mickey Mouse for years, over years, over years. It was back when I was on recreation committee, Mickey Mouse had back then, and it's just, it's seen its days and it's, if you don't have a fence there, you're not going to have a basketball court there because of the amount of vehicle traffic. So if the fence is not there, you won't have a basketball court.
Counsel Lazzo. All right, Counsel Dow. Let's look like each other.
Thank you, Chair, for you. Question, I don't know, it's too late, the design on the fence, can we, we do like two,